All right. Board members, welcome to Thursday. Mr. Bailey and company, welcome too. And we're very appreciative to have this chance to have some time to get deeper into the finance world. I think especially after last week's discussion, it's very opportune for us to even talk more deeply about the school finance and budgeting thing. So we are going to just turn over to you and let you lead us, and we'll ask questions when you let us know it's time for questions or want us to jump right in since this is a work session.
This will be the quickest. You heard me speak because I'm turning it over to Mr. Trump as well. So they're going to go through two documents with this financial analysis along with another Arkansas, introduction to Arkansas school finance. So I'll be kind of running the show up here. So I don't know if y'all need introductions or not, right?
Well, Jack Trumper, Leigh Ann Burnett, and we appreciate so much to be with you all. And Leigh Ann, turn over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. So for those of you who have not had the opportunity to meet, my name is Leigh Ann Burnett. I'm a CPA and Senior Vice President at Stevens in the Public Finance Group as Jack Trumper, who you regularly see is. This evening, we're going to go over a couple of things. We encourage this to be interactive. We want you to get as much information from us as you possibly can. We're going to have two sections. The first is a financial analysis of the district, and we're going to be looking at the assessment, the property value assessment of the district. We're going to look at what that means to the district. We're going to look at your debt and just some other information related to the finances of the district. And in the second section, Jack will lead you through the details of School Finance 101 in Arkansas. So you will get to hear all about the different programs that I'm sure Mr. Bailey has mentioned to you in meetings, and you can kind of see how those are funded through that discussion. So if you would, turn to behind tab one. On page one, this shows you the five-year assessment history of the Little Rock School District, and you can see the most recent assessment. So this would be the 2021 assessment that will be paid by taxpayers in 2022. So this year will be paid is $4,122 million. Last year was $4,444 million. The five-year annual growth rate, you can see there is just under 2.4%. And then the chart just shows you the composition of that assessment. You have real property, personal property such as cars and boats, and then utilities. The last reappraisal was in 2017, and we expect the, you know, it happens every five years, so we'll have a reappraisal this year. It'll be interesting to see what that looks like for those districts that had reappraisals in the last two years. You know, first you had concerns about COVID, but then you had the resurgence out of COVID and property values increasing. So we saw some good increases in certain districts. So we'll be anxiously awaiting that information for Little Rock School District.
Can you jump right in?
Absolutely, we'd love it.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bailey, last week we talked about the budget. Am I remembering correctly that our budget was based on a 2% increase?
So in the past, over the past, I guess, three or four years, the average has been about 3%, 3.5%. So based on our, we factored in 2% to be conservative on what we expected to have an increase in tax revenue. Collections hadn't come in as expected for this part of the year now. They can pay taxes from when the rolls open in April all the way, well, they can pay them at any time, but they're not late to October. So we had an email just came from the Treasury, and we were talking about that. I got to read the article that was published to make sure what was stated was factual. So I got to go back. But what we're looking for next year, we're not going to see that 3.5% increase for the FY fiscal year '23. It's about a 2% increase that we're looking for calendar year.
So let me understand. So the assessment, the last five years was 2.4%?
Over the last five years, we looked at the last three years for our projected for this year.
And it was more like 3.5%?
3.5%. I think 3.65 or something like that, 3.5. I just say the average on that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll pull it up on another slide as well.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Burnett.
And one thing just to mention too, on these assessed values, what you're seeing here, these are all the real, personal, and utility property, or 20% of the market value of the real property, personal property, utility property located in the boundaries of the Little Rock School District.
So if you look on the screen right now, you can kind of see that piece up there that Mr. Trumper kind of mentioned. So in the past, like for the fiscal year '18, 2019, '20 school year, we're looking at 3.69, 3.25 past year, we're looking at 2.5%. I think these are still accurate here. For next year, we're looking at only maybe a 2%. So when we went into budgeting, we went with a 2% inflationary kind of factor on as far as, it doesn't necessarily determine the collections, but that's how we raised actual overall collection projections.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question as well? When you give the data that says we're going to go through a new assessment for property, is there any way to gauge any projection at all on something like that?
They typically, actually, we talked to the assessor, Joe Thompson, who we work with, and we should have some preliminary numbers within the next couple of months. And so a lot of times, for what we call the assessment year 2022, we should get some preliminary numbers really sometime by the end of the summer, beginning of September. They have to keep in mind, they are preliminaries because sometimes, you know, they're sent out, folks can look at their assessments, they can, sometimes they can challenge. Sometimes, honestly, we've seen it that there've been some, we've seen it with typos before, but typically Plasky County really does a great job, and so we can get, we'll be able to get an idea of what 2022 looks like in the next couple of months.
Okay, on page two, we're going to break out your millage structure, which this I'm sure all of you are very familiar with. So the Little Rock School District has a maintenance and operation. The mills are 32. The dedicated M&amp;O are two mills, and then your debt service millage, which we're going to kind of delve into, is 12.4 mills for a total of 46.4. The average millage rate for Arkansas school districts is 38.93. So what is a mill? One mill equals 1/10 of 1%. And so if your real and personal property is valued at $100,000, as Jack mentioned, you take 20% of that, and that's your assessed value, and then one mill would cost a taxpayer $20. And you can see the math there, $20,000 times .001, which represents one mill, and resulting in the $20. In Little Rock School District, one mill produces $3,916,000 per year, assuming a 95% collection rate. So you take the 2021 assessment amount of $4.1 billion, times one mill, times 95% collection.
Can I mention one thing?
Absolutely.
On your dedicated M&amp;O, you vote on that each year, and you list in your ballot what those two mills can be used for. And your current ballot that you've done recently is they're used for technology and for capital projects. But you have the right that if you ever want to change those revenues to be used for certain items, you can do that. But basically what it does, it protects the revenue of those two mills, that those are the only items that it can be used for on what the voters of the Little Rock School District approve.
Is there any questions about that?
So it's on the ballot every year?
Yes, sir.
Every year.
So we use one mill to refresh all that technology, like a computer lab and things like that, and one mill goes toward capital improvement, so maintenance things. So it's been like that since, I know I've been here 13 years, so I know it was there in place before then for the same purpose.
And really, we only have a handful, at least I've worked with only a handful of districts that have a dedicated M&amp;O. I don't know if you have.
There are very few districts, back in, back when the Supreme Court came out and found that our funding form was unconstitutional, and they required all school districts to have voted 25 M&amp;O mills, school districts would go through to, in order to prevent or reduce a millage increase, if they had what we call dedicated maintenance and operation, or another term was called capital outlay, they went ahead and transferred those dedicated M&amp;O or capital outlay over to maintenance and operation to either prevent or reduce the amount of new mills they were asking for. But Leigh Ann's exactly right. There are not many in the state that still have dedicated M&amp;O, but there are a handful.
So the next, the next chart you see there is the average daily membership, and this is the third quarter average. We call it third quarter ADM. That is what the district's funding is based on. So that's why that's important, and Jack's going to get into all those details behind tab two. But the main thing you need to know, there's two things. One, if you, and when I say you, I mean the district. If you gain students, you benefit. If you lose students, you don't. And you also benefit from growth and assessment. From a financial standpoint, those are the two things, growth in enrollment, growth in ADM, third quarter ADM, and growth in assessment. So you can see what the district looks like over this five-year snapshot. Actually, slight uptick in the third quarter ADM from '21 to '22, 20,000, 501 to 20,000, 518. And like I said, we'll probably reference this here when we get behind tab two, but just keep that in mind.
So on this chart, you're noticing FY '18, you had an $18,745. It didn't include our kids that were included in our DSEG settlement, so the kids on M&amp;M along with the stipulated magnet schools.
Great point.
So it wasn't a jump there, so.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Yeah, I was wondering about that.
So it was a separate negotiated settlement on that, how they actually paid, so it didn't go into our regular ADM, so we had special funding for that.
The next section, a lot of districts want to see how they compare in terms of assessment, millage, and enrollment. So this little section here at the bottom compares the Little Rock School District with districts of similar enrollment in Arkansas. And as you might expect, and you probably know, we're talking about Springdale, Rogers, and Bentonville. You can see the assessment versus the millage versus the enrollment comparison. And a lot of times when we are asked, well, why does one, why can this district do that, do this or that, why can't we, a lot of times we end up going back to some of this data and looking at their financials because it all plays a role. On page three, you have the comparison with similar assessments. So we had similar enrollment. This is similar assessment, and you can see Springdale, Plasky County, Rogers, and Bentonville were the closest in terms of assessment. And you can see how that compares. And then the bottom section, we basically took the districts surrounding Little Rock School District in Plasky County and the surrounding counties, and we sorted these by millage rate, so you can see where Little Rock stands. Help me here, Jack. I know Watson Chapel is pursuing a millage at the August election.
Correct.
I'm going through here to see.
Yeah, well, you don't have White County here, but yeah, Watson Chapel from Jefferson County is going to the voters in August for election.
Yeah, I don't think any of these others listed are that I know of.
I do want to highlight a chart to you all, board members. If you look at this right here, you can see the 2021 assessment, and one of our competitive districts in Northwest Arkansas, you can see what their assessed values are. Notice out there, the Springdale is 2.1 billion, Rogers is 2.1, just say 2.5 billion, we're at 4.1 billion, so we're more than double out there. So with similar, well, Washington County has more enrolled than we do. So we have the necessary tax base to do the increases that we have, we want to get to. We just have to look at our staffing along with facilities. So that's the big difference when you're talking to those, those two districts, how many facilities do they have and their staffing ratios? So that's the game changer in there, in the top, you know, the top five as far as starting teacher salaries. That is correct still, Mr. Robinson, right? Yeah.
Correct.
Well, what's interesting, we always kind of say Arkansas is a rural state, and I think we are. So when you look at that top chart, you look at the districts, I mean, those are it that are at least in the 2 billion-plus category as far as their assessed values. I mean, we've got some that are bumping up to a billion, some that are close, some that are between a B and B and five, kind of like Conway that's in that lower chart. But really, when you, you'll see is that a lot of the districts around the state, because being a rural state, the assessed values, you know, are much lower. But that's a plus for Little Rock.
Springdale also announced last night they're going to give a 2.5% increase to their staff.
Salary range increase?
Yes.
So I know Fayetteville was going to 50,000 next year. I'm not sure where it's going to put Springdale with 2.5%.
I didn't see that number, but there's 2.5. They got to be close. Springdale has traditionally been the top.
Yeah.
All right, on page four, this begins the discussion about the district's outstanding debt. What we tried to do is schedule for you here the outstanding balance of the debt as of June 30th. A little bit of information about each debt issuance. So for example, the first one on page four, they were the 2017 bond issue, which related to the Southwest High School. The outstanding balance of those bonds is 66.2 million with a 3% interest rate maturing in 2033. The second bond issue from 2019 was actually some refunding bonds, and we're going to get into a discussion about that. You know, one thing this district has done an excellent job of is taking advantage of lower interest rates to actively manage your debt, because it is always better to pay yourself rather than a bondholder. And refunding bonds allows you to take that savings and put it to other school purposes. So you can see for the 2019 bonds, those refunded some bonds from 2012, which actually refunded some bonds. And refund, we say refunding, it's just like a refinance. You refund your, or you refinance your home mortgage, you refund municipal bonds. The 2006 bonds advance refunded the 2000A bonds, and you can see there the savings, the interest savings realized from each of those refundings. And it's substantial, several million dollars. And we have a summary of this, we'll show you here in a little bit. On page five, you have your 2021 issue, which refunded the 2015, 2015 issues, and then also financed the, basically the new K-8 school at McClellan, on the McClellan site. The refunding components, I guess the 15 refunded the eight, 10, and November 2010 bonds, and you can see the savings that were realized from all those refundings. And then the 15 bonds had refunded some '09 bonds, which the '09 bonds did a lot of, you can see there, roof repairs and replacements at various schools. And it was interesting when we were reviewing this, the '09 bonds, the offering document said constructing and equipping West Little Rock Elementary. And I said, well, Jack, guess what? That school now has a name. Let's change that name. So it's pretty exciting to see how the district has progressed. And so from that transaction, there was a savings of 1.8 million. So then when you go to page six, so you have bonded debt, which, you know, Jack comes and talks to you about that and what the market's doing, and we have an electronic platform and underwriters, and we serve as your municipal advisor for some clients in, well, it's not just Arkansas, but for other clients, we actually serve as underwriter. In your case, we serve as municipal advisor, we structure the bond issue, it goes on an electronic platform, and underwriting firms from all over can bid on your bonds. And so that's your bonded debt. Your non-bonded debt are debts that we actually can help you procure, which I think we do. And we have a long list of banks that are interested in lending you money. Now, this debt is repaid from your operating budget, not from your debt service mills. And we're going to get into your debt service mills in a minute. But these are good for, oh, boats, for buses, no boats, no boats. Equipment, as you can see, there were several different equipment for shorter term, unless it's energy savings, it's typically a 10-year. And so all of those are listed here with the interest rate.
So looking on this page, the first one, December the 1st, 2022, that debt will go away.
That is correct.
And then here, July the 10th, we have another debt that will go away. Correct. And we have the balance on this as of June 30 of 2022, because that is the end of this school fiscal year. But you're right, right in that first month, you'll have, you'll have another one of these knocked off.
We may add some more though.
I do have maybe a little bit related question. So on the, on the refinance that we just did, and we just, voters just approved, and we did, and we have, you know, we've done some bond, you know, selling for, for like the K-8 school and some things, but some things we haven't done yet, right? And now with, with the Fed's movement and things, so is, how's that going to, what's a guess about how that's going to impact our capacity to do the things that we want to do?
We have a page to show you.
That's a great question. Yes, you're right on target. Great question. Yeah, we'll get to that.
So what I was, I was planning, we may add some additional debt on here. Typically, we finance buses, but the last two purchases, we pretty much paid out operating funds. So depending, buses, I mean, we ordered buses probably nine months ago, and we just got notified, and I think you walked in my office where they're still delayed. We were expecting some in, in May, at least half of them, three, I think we ordered six. So it's probably going to be a lot of part of fall before we even see one of them, just because of supply and demand and just shortage of different items that are needed to make the buses. So we've been anticipating some, so we've been getting some pretty good use out of our fleet, so.
And I want to mention one on, that Leigh Ann talked about, that '21 issue that was the voted issue that we did in December. And you can see under the interest rates, it's 2% to 5%. And those are the coupons, but just to refresh everybody's memory for Dr. Wright's benefit, the true interest cost on that loan for the 315 million was a 2.6%. So what that means is this issue was structured with what we call premium bonds. Your actual yields were less than that. So when you see that 2 to 5, that is the coupons, but the true interest cost was 2.6. So we're feeling awfully good about that right now.
Thank you.
So then at the bottom of page six, this just aggregates, aggregates both your bonded debt and your non-bonded debt, which is the warrants and contracts amount of 10, basically just under 10.4 million, for a total indebtedness of the district of 421 million. So a lot of times we're asked, well, is, you know, how does, can we afford that? How does that look? And one, one comparison that people make is they take the total debt and they compare it to the total assessment of the district. And when we do that for Little Rock School District, we're at 10.2%. We have clients that have higher percentages than that and clients that have lower percentages. I like to look more at the debt service mill surplus, which we'll get to. Jack, do you have any comments on that percentage?
That's, that's a great point that Leigh Ann is saying. There used to be a law that school districts could borrow up to 27% of their assessed value, and it was state board approval, 35%. So a lot of times Leigh Ann and I will get asked, well, kind of what's an average? And honestly, we really don't know what an average is. But when you put it in that perspective, that if you could have gone up to the 27%, and you're looking at Little Rock at 10%, from an affordability standpoint, and Leigh Ann's right, you'll see this momentarily, it works for the district. No, thank you, sorry.
Are there any questions about the debt of the district? Okay, so on page seven, this is just a snapshot of your bonded debt, principal and interest. And this is how all the payments are, you can see how we structured your 2021 issue. So you can see the first two columns, after the date column, you have your 2017 and your 2019 issues, which will pay off in fiscal year 2033. And then your 2021 bonds, your payments on that debt ramps up and fills in to the final maturity of the 2052. And that's where the district benefited from that extension that you went to the voters for and was able to generate project funds.
So for the first 200 million, it didn't affect our debt service payment, it actually went down a little bit, but it will be affected when we issue the remaining bonds.
Good point. Any questions about that? Okay, this is my favorite part. So this is exciting stuff. I can tell you're all excited. On page eight, I know, so hold your applause and your excitement. So we talked about the district's millage structure. We talked about the debt service mills of the district, 12.4 mills. So I'm going to show you mathematically on this schedule the value of that 12.4 mills. So you take the most recent assessment, we've got the 2021 assessment of $4,123 million, times your 12.4 mills, and we're going to assume a 95% collection rate. Now, I'll show you the actual collection rates here in a minute, but let's assume 95%. In the very middle of this chart, you see the word revenues. That's the amount of revenue that is generated with those three assumptions. 21 assessment times 12.4 mills times 95% collection, $48,567,000. So those revenues are pledged to your bonded debt, okay? And we just showed you your, your total bonded debt payment, and those totals should carry over to this column on page eight that says bonded debt service of $20 million, and 2023, So you compare your revenues to that bonded debt service number by year, and you have a coverage. And all the coverage means is that for every dollar the district owns, owes per year, you're generating $2.42 in revenue. Former banker, 2.42, that's good coverage, you know, it's good coverage. So then, so what does that mean in dollars? Well, now, don't get too excited about this. I don't like this word, and I get really nervous when we use it. The far right column is labeled surplus, and that simply takes your debt service revenues minus your bonded debt service. It's what you have left over, okay? So the value is about 28.5 million, okay? Now, if that amount of money was going into the bank at the end of every school year, every school fiscal year, then you would know that you had tons of money to either borrow more or build up your building fund and pay cash for a building, right? Well, if you turn to page nine, you will see that sentence up there at the top under the heading, debt service revenues not needed for debt service are typically, and I would say usually, used by districts for these things. Big one, operations and maintenance. If you don't have $28 million going into the bank at the end of the fiscal year, that's being used in some part for operation and maintenance, for building fund projects, pay-as-you-go projects, or a combination. Now, to the extent, you know, we have districts who identify, you know, for the last couple of years, I've been able to put, you know, for a smaller district, I've been able to put $1 million into my building fund every year. So I'm really not using that money for operations or pay-as-you-go. So maybe I do want to borrow, you know, issue what we call second lien bonds and put that towards a bond payment. But if you can't identify, a lot of times, I will just say, districts use it for operation and maintenance, pay-as-you-go project, and building funds. You know, painting schools, I don't know, Kelsey, you can probably give better examples than me of the types of projects that you pay as you go.
Yeah, we had had many. So when we bought land in West Little Rock and Southwest, we actually used our fund balance and used operation money to actually buy those, but most of our projects have been funded by major revenue companies. And so we use that excess or surplus money for operations, so salary benefits, utilities and things like that. So when we actually looking at carving out, you know, savings, we're looking at carving out some savings in that, what's in that surplus column. So our debt service process issued that 92 million for a second lien in 2017 was approximately about 14, 14 and a half million, so we jumped up to about 21 million. So we had about a $7 million cost for that 92 million and helped finish Southwest and some of those other projects out there. So when we're looking at any cost saving measures or budget reallocation, it's basically coming from that revenue source to reallocate it toward capital improvement funds or wherever we might have it, so.
Okay. So back to my original statement a couple pages ago, growing enrollment but also growing in assessment is what contributes to the finances of the district. And this chart shows you the impact. So if you're using your surplus that's identified on the previous page for operation and maintenance, what does it mean to the district if you have assessment growth? Well, you can see, this chart shows you the assessment growth by year, the debt service revenue that was generated based on that particular assessment, the 95% collection rate, and the millage rate of 12.4, and then what that meant in terms of growth. And you can see the growth in assessment. And you can see the growth in assessment from 2020 to 2021 was, positively impacts the district $927,000. So, you know, every time we have an increase in assessment, it's an increase in your debt service revenue, which, if your bonded debt service stays the same, increases your surplus, which can be provided, provide for operation and maintenance and pay-as-you-go projects.
And on each one of those columns that we have from 17 to 20, those are increases from one year to the next. So they're kind of add-ons, so to speak. So 17, 16 to 17, it increased 237,000, but 17 to 18, a million and six, then 18 to 19, a million and four, 19. So those are, as Leanne said, those are, that's a great way, it's how you assess values, make your debt service mills worth more, that generates more revenue for the district.
Are there any questions on that?
I do want you to look on the screen, you can see some of the past appreciations, where we used to see some, some great appreciation. So just say the 2006, '07 year, we had five and a half, we saw a 6% growth, a 6.6, almost a, a 8% here, and then the bubble burst. We had, you know, just a quarter, then we actually had depreciation, pretty much of that. I don't know if that's the first time in Little Rock District where the assessment went down, but first that I could find. And then it kind of came back up and it was back down for the previous year. So there were some ebbs and flows in some of that, some of those outward years. So we're hopeful that we can stay around the 2% to 3% growth every year, if not more, so.
Any questions on that? Okay, I told you that I would show you your collection rates. We use 95% in our analysis, but this, on page nine, we just show you the summary of your collection rate, and you can, you might think, well, how in the world can you have over 100% collections? Well, as, as you might know from, from, you know, just your everyday life, if someone doesn't pay their taxes and the property goes for sale, whenever it's sold, the county's going to collect those taxes. And so that may carry over between calendar years. And so some years you may be over 100% because you're collecting on previous year's taxes that were due. So your five-year average collection rate is a 98%, which is a great rate, so. Any questions on that?
And that's the collection, that, the timing of the collection is what kind of affects us. So you have a calendar year collection for taxes. We own a fiscal year, which are totally two different things. So our fiscal year kind of comes in the beginning, in the middle of that, that calendar year. So some of those taxes may, we expect it to be in one fiscal year, but it may hit the following fiscal year. So that's what we're really trying to judge now, especially as we look for increases, whether we can, you know, project the accurate amount or how much tax is going to be for fiscal year '23 and '24, so.
This also comes up with the question that Ella, the Teacher Association PPC brought up about why'd your fund balance go down?
Yeah, so the fund balance goes, I mean, it's just a snapshot at that particular moment. So the main snapshot is June 30, our fund balance, but I mean, it goes up and down every month, every week, as we get money and as we expend money as well.
So your percentage, the average percentage, does it go up during the year or does?
Fund balance.
Collection percentage?
We really just measured over the, overall fiscal year.
For the whole year?
Yeah, yeah.
You don't do a quarterly or half a year check?
I don't, I don't know if y'all follow anything on a quarterly basis like that. So yeah, so your taxes become, as soon as they open the tax roll, usually it's in April, I believe, maybe in the March, but usually in April. So at that point, you can start paying your, your taxes for that, that year. So you get to choose when you pay it, unless it's a part of your escrow, and then your escrow company actually, you know, makes that payment on your behalf.
Yeah, the real estate companies typically pay the taxes, I think, in the spring.
Yeah.
And then if you're like me, you pay your personal property taxes on October the 15th, or whenever that time is, so.
Or whenever you got to renew your tags.
So your big years, I think, are typically, don't you think, kind of in the spring and then in the fall?
Yeah, our biggest collection is in the fall. So you have that October 15 deadline, so you don't get penalized, you know, for late, so.
So, so this, this year, I mean, everything's inflated, so. And, and we're thinking that because of the inflated economy, people are slowing down or being passive about paying their tax.
Yeah, I think so. So our, our tax basis there, it's just, you know, getting patients to pay. And I mean, they, they don't, they may pay before it is actually due, but it just doesn't match up with our timing that we're looking at right now. So we would hope that everybody paid their taxes as soon as you get that tax bill, but I don't, I don't do all mine like that as well. So before I assess, you know, in, in May, I may pay my personal property taxes, or, you know, my escrow comes out, my mortgage comes out of escrow, so my taxes.
On your bond payments, what's important about the payment dates, you make them February and August. And so, and so your February, you get the benefit of the tax collections in the fall of the previous year, and then, of course, and, and, and then August, you get the benefit of the taxes that are paid in the spring. So it kind of works on how the revenues are coming in.
So when we're having that discussion, it's not about us not having a, a good tax base and taxes, just the timing of when the money's going to come in and whether it hits right in that fiscal year, so we can afford stacking salaries on top of each other. So that's what we're really looking at, so.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes, ma'am.
In that we have that shortfall because people are not paying their taxes, perhaps because of the, the economy and COVID, do you all even anticipate that people are going to actually pay their taxes? Because they, they might not be, you know, the way things are going, might have an issue with even buying food.
Yeah.
You know, so like, well, we're doing this projecting what it's going to be, and we, it, it really might not even happen like that.
They eventually, we eventually get that tax money, whether the property goes to length or they do a tax sale, because we're going to collect taxes one way or another. So it may not be the same if they sell it, may not be the, the same amount. But usually, when you saw that slide on there where we had 100%, that was because we got tax collections from a previous calendar year. So it's just really a timing right now. So instead of if I, where the company is now, since gas is close to, you know, $4.55, where it might be whatever you're buying, instead of me paying my taxes now in June, I may say, well, let me wait and see how my finance is going to look like, you know, the next few months. I might have delayed to make my payment right before that due in October. So that's our, really all we're talking about, not that they're not actually making that payment and just making, they're just coming in less than we expected during this period of time.
But you also reported and talked about new construction in, in Pulaski County area. So I, I, I think that there's additional, maybe additional tax revenue coming in.
I hope so. Yeah, the appreciation we have for next year is at 1.95, so this is a reappraisal year. So hopefully that reappraisal helps us out quite a bit, especially with all the home sales and different things. But you have a lot of businesses that have closed doors, or they have less inventory on hand and things like that. So that's going to affect us as well on the commercial side.
Very good point.
Yeah. It's kind of hard to judge right now. I was hoping we were coming out of the pandemic and we're in endemic stage. I'm not sure if it's a resurgence now, you know, having 7,000 in the, in the state, I think, as it yesterday. So with everything else going on with the economy and the price of everything else, it's just costing everybody more, even us, so.
Great discussion. Are there any other comments on that?
Keep asking them questions, I know y'all awake out there now.
I know.
This can be kind of boring at times, just looking at it, but it's something that's beneficial for everybody to understand when we have these conversations.
Let me ask the question, I should have asked it prior too, but how long has Springdale paid more money for their teachers? How long has that been? You don't know?
More than Little Rock, it's been a while. So they've been in the top of, well, you up in, are you?
Since I came in the state, they were. So I would say probably at least 10 years now. You also have to take into account, that's their starting teacher salary.
Yeah, I understand.
So if you look at it in terms of the average teacher salary, we look a lot better. Or if we look at the more veteran teachers, we also look better. But the starting teacher salary, until we got to that 43,000 number, we were, we were around 100. Now we're, you know, close to the, we're probably in the top 15 now.
So most of the districts you're seeing, outpaces like that are growing districts, so, and they're able to really right-size their facility needs. So Springdale's in the building process, so they built as they needed. So we already had existing buildings, and we started kind of losing enrollment, so that's kind of where we got behind. So we, we also pay more benefits than them as well. So I know the CFOs, all the CFOs up there, we've had those discussions over the last probably 10 years, just professionally, kind of see where, how could we get to that point? But it's a difference in staff and different in facilities, different in what they pay on benefits as well, and plus on the upper end of the salary schedule, they're not anywhere near where we were at that point, so, but they may be catching up a little bit now.
Probably the most dramatic stat you could give, Kelsey, is that, I don't know if you know the ballpark number, but when you compare the number of schools that we have versus the number of schools that Springdale has?
Yeah.
That's, that's a huge operational end of things.
It was significant last time I checked, so, yeah, they probably have at least 40% less schools than we currently have facilities-wise.
Yet they have more students.
Good question.
Okay, on page 10, this is just a summary of your audits. So you can, this is a five-year snapshot of the revenues and expenditures as legislative audit. Ashley, who do you use as your auditor, Kelsey?
Legislative.
Legislative, okay. As they group those, following the regulatory accounting principles, the audits of the district can be viewed at the legislative audit website, if you'd like more details about the numbers on this page. On page 11, we had talked about when we went through your bonded debt, how the district has successfully managed the outstanding debt through refundings. And what this page, this page actually just demonstrates that. So you can see by series, so going back to 2010, the bonds that were refunded, and then you can see by year, the amount of savings that that refunding provided the, the district. So for example, the March 1, 2010 bond issue refunded the October 15, 2000 issue. And you can see, and, and I, I would say 80 to 90% of the refundings we do, the savings is taken upfront. So unlike your mortgage, if you refinance your mortgage, you want a lower monthly payment, right? So you take the savings over the life of the mortgage, whether it's 15 or 30 years. Well, in school finance, it's so cash flow driven that school districts typically take the savings upfront, and that way you can put it to work immediately for either, you know, whatever, whatever purpose. So you can see for the 2010 issue, in 2011, over $1.5 million was saved by this refunding. The next year, $1,368,000. So basically, that amount of money, instead of being paid to bondholders for interest, it came to benefit the district because you refunded your 2,000 bonds.
So all our savings actually went back into capital improvement. So this is a testament to the board, supporting us every time we brought one to the, to the board and the economic conditions, supporting it as well, so to achieve these savings.
I congratulate you on that. So you can see by actively managing your debt, from 2010 through the most recent refunding in 2019, $29 million has been saved and has been able to benefit the district instead of going to pay interest on debt. So I congratulate you on that. Is there any questions about this page? Okay, now page 12 is a lot of information on one page, and I, you know, Kelsey, I failed to visit with you to see if you have your own spreadsheet, but we prepare this for our clients, just to kind of give a little snapshot of what the school funding looks like one year compared to the upcoming year. And so what this spreadsheet does, there's a lot of information here, and it'll, actually, when Jack goes through the, the finance 101, school finance 101, these are the numbers that correlate. But you can see that it basically starts with your assessment, your millage that we've talked about, that three-quarter ADM, that funding's based on. And basically, this schedule calculates the revenues, projected revenue change of the district. And based on this very preliminary analysis, you can see in the dark gray box, the last line, based on certain assumptions, it looks like there could be a $2.5 million increase in revenues for the '22, '23 school year over the current school year. And you can see the components there of what contributes to that. And of course, your growth in assessment helps that. You know, picking, it looks like you picked up 16 students, as we discussed earlier. But we'll get into this more, that I would like to highlight there in the middle of the page, the enhanced student achievement funding, the ESA. Back in the day, I think it was referred to as free to reduce lunch. That's over 70%, which you'll see is, is a significant mark to be over 70% when Jack does his presentation. So we'll come back to that.
So one thing on that, that the legislative passed this year was a whole harmless for our ESA, because they knew many districts were virtual, so they couldn't collect the necessary applications for meal services. So you won't receive less than what you received in the prior year. So you can kind of see those numbers are the same there. So we're pretty much guaranteed to at least receive that $16,45,000 for upcoming year. Looks like we're going to get a little increase based on inflationary factors on there. So that was something that we can thank our legislators for as well.
Great point, Kelsey.
So, a question. So their ESA growth funding is zero for la, 2020, 21, '22, but you're saying coming up this year, there's a possibility, well, legislatively, we are getting like 16?
Yeah, we're going to get at least the same amount we got last year. So even though our meal collections possibly was down, so they're going, they froze us for one year, basically a whole harmless, no one's going to actually lose any of that ESA funding.
Okay.
Across the state for this year. So that's why when Mr. Walker Heinz is here, we're going to be really pushing the families to fill out those meal applications, so we can get accurate picture of what we have there. So we know we're, we're above 70. I'm, I'm thinking we're probably 76, 77% district, but we got to get everybody to kind of fill those meal applications out there, so it's important. And at the bottom, where Leanne talked about, about the 2.5 million increase, we were hoping we could get about 3.5 million based on our exit criteria. So if we can realize all that, I think we'll be in pretty good shape. So we're still working through that to see. So like I said, it's all based on the timing of when actually collections come in, not based on when, if we're going to get them. So just when they're going to come in. We pretty much, if you looked at the previous slide, where I would say usually a 98% collection rate. So on this presentation, Jack and I talked about doing 95 to be conservative based on this market. So typically, we're going to probably be around that 98% collection rate, but just about time.
And this doesn't even include any what either we'll call either declining enrollment or student growth funding, because we really, we hadn't gotten into '22, '23. And you can see in '21, '22, the declining enrollment was almost, well, was almost $2.9 million, and that's not even a factor yet in '22, '23. And so this revenue projection is something that we can, we will continuously update once we get into the '22, '23 fiscal year.
Well, let me show you that on this one as well, I believe it's on this one. So this is one of the spreadsheets you all have seen in the past. So this is our, our difference in our, our state foundation revenue coming in because of the enrollment decrease. So we lost about, just say, $4.6 million, but we had kind of soft landing, and this might have changed here based on, let's see if that's the same amount. We had $2.8 million that came in for declining enrollment to help offset that. It is on your slide, the right, Jack.
We're showing 2, 2,899,000.
Yeah, that's what it is, yeah, that's another number out there. But basically, that offset, we're not going to get that $2.8 billion this upcoming year, so we're going to take the brunt of that reduction all the way for that next fiscal year starting July 1st. So it's good if this number, I think this number's correct for the prior year, three-quarter average?
Yes.
So yeah, so growth is always good in that area. That means you're not going to lose any funding you currently have, for the most part.
I'm not going to ask for questions, because we're about to go, when we go through school finance, I think we'll come back to this. So unless there's anything else, we can move to the original question about issuing bonds for the remaining authority. Obviously, the Fed action, there has been, I can tell you, so there is a daily Obviously, the Fed action, there has been, I can tell you, so there is a daily index that comes out. It's called MMD, Municipal Market Data. And it's an indication of a AAA-rated bond over the 30-year maturity. So, it gives you an indication of a AAA-rated, AAA-rated bond rate, interest rate, for each maturity of a 30-year bond. In the last week, in anticipation of Fed action, Fed wording, the tug-of-war between concerns about inflation versus concerns of a recession, the increase in the 10-year MMD, so a 10-year tax-exempt AAA-rated bond, has been almost 50 basis points, which is a half a percent. A half a percent increase in yields, which would correlate to you in terms of the cost of funds. So, we got a read on a recent school transaction and applied that towards a bond issue to generate $100,675,000. And you can see in blue, the estimated debt service to repay that bond issue. And it's about $2 million, I'm sorry, $6,250,000 through 2052. And that would, that debt service, that annual payment, would provide for a bond issue to generate the $100,675,000 in project funds. So, you can see, if you take your existing bonded debt, plus that new payment, what your estimated total debt service would look like. And then, of course, we want to compare that to your revenues, the $48,567,000. And you can see that coverage number drops because you're increasing your debt. So, instead of having $2.42 in revenue for every dollar in debt service payment, debt service, it drops to $1.84. And in terms of dollars, of course, it goes from the $28 million that we've been looking at in the surplus to $22,240,000.
I think previously, we're looking at maybe an increase in maybe $5 million or so?
Yes. That was, we had a 3.41% that we ran a couple of weeks ago.
And look at the rate at the bottom, it's 4.34%.
And this was based on a sale Ryder School District did this week. So, it's a good current market, so you had to move that fast.
So, the importance of this slide here, and I wanted them to make sure we include and talk about it. So, we have another $100 million we have to go out and actually do for, you know, the rest of the projects out there. So, it's going to cost us, in today's market, about $6.2 million. So, we have to build that into a future budget. So, that's going to be something that's going to be continued through 2052. So, as we're looking at, you know, subsequent budget years, this is one of the parts we got to absorb. So, hopefully, rates will go back down, but just if we were to go out and try to get the money down, that's most likely what it will cost us. So, I think we're still probably a year out on actually, you know, trying to even look at those things based on the number of projects we got now and how fast, or how slow the money's actually going out right now.
Kelsey, can you give a reminder, at least to the public, of why we did it in two parts? Just so that anybody that's not listening, I know the board's been educated, but I think it'd be good for the public to hear.
So, you all correctly expressed it by misspeaking and things. So, from that point, we basically have three years to expend the revenue, the funds that we get in. So, based on the projects we had, we didn't think we could expend a whole $300 million in three years. So, the $200 million probably is a challenge right now. But, we think we have a pretty good handle with the new KA in Southwest, along with the new West Rock School, and things going on in Central and all other things around the district right now. So, things are going a little bit, not on those projects, like the KA is going pretty much on time. But, other things, we're still waiting on, you know, some materials will be delivered and things like that. So, it looks like it's, everything is being delayed even more. When we started looking at, you know, these projects, the war in Ukraine wasn't going on at that time. So, that's affected a lot. And that's the big part on the buses. And when we talk about the manufacturing of the buses, the seat cushions that go into the buses, they're made in Ukraine. So, bus companies that happen to look for a different manufacturer to manufacture those seat cushions now, different things like that. So, things like that that you didn't really expect, you know. So, but, I'm hopeful, have fingers crossed, and actually praying that this rate will go down here in the next year or so, so we can get back to some of those great rates we experienced in the past. But, this is, this is one milestone. We have to, you know, get to another $6 million on top of whatever else we're doing budget-wise, so.
Well, and it's also possible, in the time you do this, you may have two, two years go by, so two assessment years.
Yeah.
Going back to the previous page on what that increases your revenue, that if we have a good growth from '21 to '22, and then '22, '23, it may make up some of that.
That's right.
Should make up some of that difference.
That's hopeful as well, yeah.
Any questions?
Excellent point, Mr. Trumper.
We're looking for any country we can find.
We understand that, because we are, we know, we know.
So, are you saying I was a little bleak in that?
I'm saying you were playing your typical role as chief deputy. Sometimes it's slightly depressing to me.
We'll dream a little while. So, I don't know. I know we've been going an hour in this Trumper presentation. Do we need a break? Will y'all keep going?
So, in your handout, in your front of your book, everybody should have one of these pages. It's called the State Aid Printout, because we're going to kind of just refer to this. So, you can kind of get a feel for, for really what we're wanting to show you here. So, basically, how Arkansas school districts are funded in Arkansas. And then, LeAnn and I will talk about some of the borrowing scenarios that you've done in the past. But, if we could, let's just open it up to page four. And it says, "The Sources of Public Education Funding in Arkansas." And it's a pie chart that shows what level of the revenues come from local, what come from the state, what come from Fed, and then what comes from other. And of course, you'll notice that the state does have a big impact on the funding of Arkansas school districts.
It's tab two in the book?
I'm sorry, tab two, page four, sorry.
Sorry.
My apologies.
There we go, yeah, page four.
This is just to kind of show where the different revenues across the state for Arkansas Public Schools, where they come, what percentage comes from the local. And the local is your local millages, as we talked about with Little Rock. And then, it comes from the state aid and the state foundation funding and the categorical funding that we're going to talk about momentarily. So, if you would, let's just go ahead. And when you turn to page five, five kind of gave you a breakdown of what the federal funds can be used for. And you can see it's at-risk children programs, improving teacher quality, child nutrition, Head Start, drug-free, class size reduction, and special education. I think we would tell you that typically with most school districts, your federal funding is going to be your smallest percentage compared to your state and your local. So, we're really going to focus more on the state and local funding for this presentation.
Up until these last few years, with all the increase of the estimate, a lot. So, yeah, it was a flood of estimate, so.
So, on page six, when we look at the key financing components, we had talked about the assessed valuation. And as LeAnn mentioned, that's how important that is from a revenue standpoint, is that, you're right. You gain revenues by either increased enrollment and increased assessment values. And I think you saw on that debt service revenue increase, why that's so important to have, to be in an area of the state that's got a good growing assessment. I think in Little Rock, I think we're very lucky, because with the exception of those two years, our assessments have grown each year. And then, we have your millage rate, which of course, for Little Rock School District, is the 46, is the 46.4 mills, which includes your maintenance and operation, your dedicated maintenance and operation mills, and your debt service. And then, of course, your average daily membership, which is, as she says, you know, the definition of your average daily membership means the total number of days for school attended plus the total number of days absent by students. In our world, when we're looking at this, the way the funding formula works, it's always based on the prior year three-quarter average daily membership. So, the question that you asked momentarily ago, Mr. Bailey, about the prior three-quarter, we have to wait till we get that information from the Department of Education. And we typically get that going into the third quarter of the year, and so those numbers are current. So, those are your three primary components for the funding formula for Arkansas Public School Districts.
Y'all following Dr. Wright? And you good on, I'm not sure how y'all did it. Is it the same kind of formula in Mississippi?
Similar.
Okay. So, average, here's some, average ADA and ADM. So, ADM is actually the membership, that includes your total enrollment. ADA is your average daily attendance, it includes your absence and things like that. And the funding is not based on ADA, it's based on ADM, so.
And what we've kind of tried to do for everybody with this book, it's kind of a great, you know, it's something you can always refer back to. And, you know, looking at what the funding formula, that's why we want to kind of point out how it equates to the State Aid Printout. So, as was mentioned earlier, the property tax, your millage is based on the assessed value. A mill is one-tenth of a cent. Or, if you want to determine, of course, what one mill generates in Little Rock School District, you take that total assessed value times .001. And as we mentioned earlier, that if your home is valued at $100,000, you're assessed at 20% of that, which is $20,000. So, one mill, additional mill, would be $20 a year in your property tax payment. For Little Rock School District, based on your 21 assessment of the 4.1 billion, one mill's going to generate a little over $3.9 billion. So, it's really interesting, assessment growth in Little Rock can really make a substantial difference in your revenue. And so, that's, that's a good question. So, this year, this reappraisal year, it's going to be very interesting based on the comments that you mentioned about the inflationary factors plus the general reappraisal timeframe.
In that charter schools or public schools, how does that work? As for, is the levy funds from Little Rock School District? Because we have quite a few charter schools.
Correct.
And, you know, some politicians want to get rid of the whole state income tax.
And they want the money to follow the student. We're hearing that. But, from your standpoint, from the way we calculate it, it takes away from students in the Little Rock School District. And you'll see here in a minute what your foundation funding amount is per child. And that is a combination of both local revenue per student and state. So, when you lose students, you basically lose that dollar amount per child. That's the impact on Little Rock School District.
Well, I understand that, but the fact I think a lot of people don't understand is the charter system is hurting us.
Correct.
And they really need to look at that, because every time, every time a new charter opens, we lose students and we lose money.
That's correct.
And I don't think a lot of people understand that. I do. When they first started the charter, I saw a killer district in Kansas City. And I don't want the same thing to happen here. But, I think in a foreign public, would need to really look at what charter schools are doing to our regular public schools.
It is, it's taking students away and taking revenue away.
Right.
You're exactly right.
And they, I, and they don't even have to be certified to do what we do, what they do. You know, I don't know what their pay scale is like or anything like that. But, I know that charter schools hurt us.
Would agree, would agree. So, I mean, like I said, and even the other schools that are opening up that take away students from the Little Rock School District. Part of your funding, I'm sorry. So, part of your funding form, which we're going to go over in a minute, is what we call miscellaneous funds. And miscellaneous are funds that are received if you have a payment lieu of taxes program, if they're federal force reserves, if they're mineral leases, if they're other revenues. There can actually even be, there has been a time where a city has actually passed a sales tax for a very short period of time, that the majority of that revenue can go towards a school district. But, it is included as a miscellaneous funds, and it is an offset against your state aid. And we're going to show you that formula momentarily. But, for Little Rock School District, on this State Aid Printout, if you look at line item seven, up in the top left-hand corner, for '21, '22, the miscellaneous funds included in the funding formula was $647,222. Does everybody see that on this page? It's on that page right there, yes, ma'am. It's on that line item number seven, in the top left-hand corner.
You added $10 on there.
What did I say?
Twenty-two.
Oh, $647,212, excuse me. Sorry about that.
We need a $10.
So, to kind of put that more in perspective, going to page eight, we look at the different type of millage rates that school districts in Arkansas can levy. And there are three, and Little Rock levies all three. One is your maintenance operation mills, which we're required in Arkansas to have a uniform rate of tax, which is a minimum of 25 mills for maintenance and operation. It can never go below that number. And then, you have your debt service mills, which are 12.4 for Little Rock School District, which will be on the books for as long as your debt is outstanding. And then, we have the dedicated maintenance and operation mills, or capital outlay, which is the 2.0, which are voted on each year. They can only be used for maintenance and operation purpose that the voter specifically approved. And that's why it lists in your ballot what they're being used for. We used to put in the ballot, you could use dedicated MNO mills for projects or for purposes authorized by law. I don't know when it's changed, but now you have to put in your ballot what you're using those funds for. And you have to use them for those projects that the voters approve. But, you can see that you're limited to a maximum of three mills. And then, once approved by the voters, they basically stay on the books until the voters change that. And that would be if the district ever went back and either wanted to remove those two dedicated MNO or transfer them over to MNO, or transfer them over to debt service. But, in the right-hand corner, you'll see that Little Rock does have your 25 MNO mills that you're required to have by our Arkansas Constitution. You have seven additional MNO mills, which gets you to the 32. And then, there's your two dedicated MNO, and then your 12.4 debt service for a total of 46.4 mills.
I guess what I was asking, like, the, the money that, well, the millage and whatever that's coming out of, that we're looking at the Little Rock School District, the charter schools get the same amount?
That's correct.
So, charter schools don't have a tax base, so they get 100% of whatever the foundation funding amount is.
That's correct.
Little Rock, on the other hand, gets a portion that's attributed to your tax, your local tax collection, and a portion from the state. So, it may just be our state, out of that state foundation matrix, we only may just say receive 40% of what that total allocation is, because we have a tax base to offset part of that. Where charter schools don't have a tax base at all, so they get more money.
100%.
So, 100%.
That's ridiculous.
But, the funding is only lost when we lose students to them, so. And depending on what type of student you lose, you know, it may be additional funding. So, if it's an L, if it's a SED, we typically don't lose them, but.
No, they don't let them stay. Moving on to page nine, your foundation funding, and on your State Aid Printout, if you look at the top right-hand corner on line item 16, for the '21, '22 fiscal year, each student, or this district has received $7,182 per student. And for, as Mr. Bailey just mentioned, for Little Rock School District, that number is going to be realized from a combination of what is generated locally by our tax base. And then, wherever we fall short of that $7,182, the state comes in with what we call their state foundation funding aid. And so, under the foundation funding paragraph there, you can see that the foundation funding for the '21, '22 school year is $7,182. In '22, '23, that number will increase to $7,349 per ADM. And each legislative session that takes place, and I guess we'll have another one, I guess in 2022, right? Then, they will address that for the next two years.
I guess I should have read it down here. I would have been on point with Ms. Calloway was talking about. So, at the bottom, you see this part down here?
Yes.
The charter schools would actually receive that $7,182 from the department. We're going to actually receive $23.17, because our local revenue is making up a portion of that, at $7,182, so.
And Ashley, can I, and Kelsey, to your point earlier, that, that $23.17, the state pays that portion over how many months of the year?
Eleven, I believe.
Eleven months, right, evenly. Whereas, your local revenue is dependent on when people pay their taxes.
Yes, sir.
So, when you look at the formula, you take your district assessment times .025, which is 25 mills, times a 98% collection rate, plus your miscellaneous funds, and then is divided by the prior year three-quarter average daily membership. Now, the state is going to guarantee a collection rate on your first 25 mills of 98%. Everything above those 25 mills, you will collect at whatever your collection rates are. So, we showed you earlier that your collection rates were slightly, what, 98.33%? Does that sound right?
That's right.
So, basically, what that would mean is, on the first 25 mills, the district is going to have to send part of that money back to the state. is going to have to send part of that money back to the state, but on everything above that twenty-five mills, the district gets to keep. And so LeAnn and I have said, more importantly, if we're sitting in Mr. Por's chair, that you'd be rather giving money back on that twenty-five mills, because on every mill that you have above that, you collect. So if you're at ninety-eight percent, a hundred percent, you'll be collecting more revenues on those mills above that. But if you, so if you take that formula, you take the, and this is, we're doing this on your twenty-one, twenty-two, so if you take your, if we take your twenty-twenty assessment, which was the four-billion, forty-four-million, one-forty-two, times point oh-two-five, twenty-five mills, times your ninety-eight percent collection rate, plus your miscellaneous funds of six-forty-two to twelve, divided by your prior year three-quarter ADM, and if you look at your state aid printout on line item ten, in the top left-hand corner, you'll see twenty-twenty-one ADM, one through three average, twenty-five-oh-one, twenty-five. And you divide it by that number, that equals four-thousand-eight-sixty-four-point-five-two, which matches the line item, line item fifteen up in the top right-hand corner. But you're supposed to have seven-thousand-one-eighty-two, so then the state's going to come in and give you two-thousand-three-seventeen-forty-eight, which if you look at line item seventeen, you'll see those numbers match, and then you add them up, and there you get your seven-thousand-one-eighty-two. So in this, in this, in the state's mind, on an average revenue per student, Little Rock School District is a wealthy school district. And the reason why I say that is, if you look at, if you look at your state wealth index on line item twenty-two, you'll show that it's zero. And the way that state wealth index works is you basically take the ratio, if you take line item fifteen, the four-eight-six-four-point-five-two, and divide it by line item seventeen, the two-thousand-three-one-seven-point-four-eight, that equals two-point-zero-nine-nine. Well, the formula says you subtract that from one. Well, if you subtract it from one, you get a negative number. And so therefore, since you get a negative number, it's basically a zero. So as we all know, when you take something and multiply it by zero, it's zero, and so that's why you do not have a state wealth index. And the way that index works, the higher the number, and keep in mind you're negative, but the higher that number on a, on a local revenue per student, the poorer the district. So if those numbers were reversed, that your local revenue was the two-thousand-three-seventeen, and the state was the four-thousand-eight-sixty-four, your state wealth index would be a whole different number. But in, in the funding formula standpoint, based on the local revenue per student, the district is a wealthy district.
So in other words, Jack, when you say the district is a wealthier district, that means the district is generating a greater amount of its funding
Yes.
Than the state.
And there are some districts that there, and there are only, there are not many, Mr. Por, you, there are like five or six, that their local revenue generates the entire seven-thousand-one-eighty-two, and so therefore, they do not get any state foundation funding. They get the other categorical funding, but they just don't get any state foundation funding. And there are not many, but there are four or five of them that, that do generate the whole seven-thousand-one-eighty-two.
So let me just make a comment, see if I'm in the big picture thinking. So, you know, we get, you know, the money per student, the combination of local taxes and the state, we don't have any control about that, because that's based on assessments, and we don't have any control about that. We don't have any control about, for the most part, about federal funding
Correct.
For that concern. We do have some control about how do we handle our debt service.
Correct.
And, and your feedback has been, and what Kelsey has, has shown over the years, is that we do a very responsible, you know, effective job on handling that. Then the two other pieces we have is our general maintenance operation budget, and our expenses, and our, how many students we can attract, which we have some influence, but not total influence, because if we don't get to decide that, you know, other families decide that, but we do have a chance to be more attractive. So we get, we can control the expenses, we can control how attractive we are, and we can control how we handle our debt. And the rest is pretty much out of our control. Is that be fair?
I would say so, yes, sir.
And you really can't control much on that attraction. We can do some things to try to help attract, but of course, we talked about that third-quarter average ADM is a year, the prior year.
Yeah.
So if you attract some people, this, or kids this year, you're really not going to see that funding to the following year.
Yeah.
But outside of the growth funding, you get some growth funding, like we have with declining enrollment. So Mr. Por and I did a presentation not too long ago, so the main focus typically on any district is the expenditure, because that's what you have the autonomy to control. But revenue-wise, we're dependent, because we can't make more widgets, make more money and stuff like, or normal operations, so we're a little limited.
That's great. Great point.
Great summary.
Yeah.
And I think you could say that for every school district.
Yeah.
The question y'all asked, and y'all are going to take my job for long now.
[laughing]
Y'all don't get up there and do this presentation.
I'm not sure if anybody's going to be jumping in.
Not for ten years. But I have a question, and this is about expenditure. And Kelsey, this is directed towards you. And you, and I'm going to say this, I'm saying this because we had a discussion in the last board meeting about expenditures, and not being able to, to, to accomplish a goal that this board has set, paying teachers. We, the administration came to us with a recommendation on expenditures, and we met some of them, but we didn't meet all of them. And now, we, you know, we're, we're trying to make that up. Can you comment on that a little bit?
I can. So you are a goal of being in the top five of.
We should be, we should be number one.
Yeah. Well, the goal is to be in the top five of starting teachers' hours, so that's the written goal. You can't have an implied goal that you want to keep as many schools, well, I guess you can, you can have, keep as many schools open as possible outside of what the data reflects. So the data reflected, we lost eighteen-hundred students. I, I pulled it up, if you want to see it, on the elementary side of the last five years since we had a reduction, which reductions came in shortly, maybe during the time Mr. Por, I think we had already started that when he came about, but we closed Franklin, we closed Wilson, we're still using Wilson building as ALLE, and we did Woodruff, and I think we maybe failed it at that point, which was way out there. Kind of a fluke. So since that time, we've lost eighteen-hundred K, five students, down on some of the things as far as pre-K, so we hadn't closed any schools at the time. So proposal was, I think, four. We probably could have proposed eight to nine, at least, based on the capacity of our elementary sites. And so one of the things, and I'm guessing, well, one of the things we may want to look at in the upcoming years, maybe hiring a professional demographer, to go out there and kind of see whether the population growth and where we actually need to have facilities out there, because that was one of the things we talked about having in place, maybe margin, having that discussion. We did talk about right size as far as staffing, but facilities, we still got, we did the blueprint, but we still got some work to do on, you know, facility-wise. But you can't have competing goals when we have aggressive goal like that. That was aggressive, because, I mean, this was something, we talked about getting to forty thousand since we had the strategic plan when you all was on the board, which Dr. Watson, I think, started in two thousand nine, ten, to get to forty thousand. We just got to thirty-six thousand last year, and that was due to the teacher utilization fund that helped us out get to that point. And we jumped from thirty-six to forty-three thousand. This year was a seven-thousand-dollar increase. That was major. So the overall plan was about twenty-two and a half million dollars. You add twenty-two and a half plus the six million here to the other hundred million, you're looking at twenty-eight million carrying costs that keeps on giving. So we got to get to a point where we're about twenty-eight to thirty million dollars that we can, our budget can support that, so. But you can't have competing goals. It's going to be hard decisions. We talked about that, so we have too many facilities. And I know it's always hard to close any facilities out there, but we just have too many. And then, I mean, the data, if we're going to make those data-driven decisions, we have to make those hard, you know, tough decisions at times. So there's no way we can really get, even if we, we make the leap, next year we able to afford to forty-five-five, we have to make some even tougher decision that following year, because that's going to compound another seven and a half million on top of that, plus most likely we'll be selling buns, which, if the rates go down, maybe we just say, I'm going to dream like Mr. Por, five million dollars, but I'm going to probably say we may be paying six million dollars in interest of debt service. So those are the things we have to accomplish, so.
Kelsey, I don't know if it's, I've never seen a map like this.
Which one?
But, but when you talk about the demographer.
Okay, oh, yeah.
But, of course, if we ever had a map that showed population density, where kids are, you know, particularly if there's one that showed changes, you know, like over the past ten years, and you could see, you know, where people, where the population has moved or increased and decreased. And then we also showed where schools are located, and you could overlay those. I think that would be, as a board member, that would be very helpful, and I think it might be helpful for the public too, to see what the challenges are that we're trying
Yeah.
To face, because, you know, where we have population changes in some places, but you know, you can't move schools around, schools are where they are, and, and that's, that's a difficult thing.
Be similar to what you all looked at on zones and different things like that, but it gives us a professional, another person looking at that, so we can make plans. So we paid a firm about a million dollars, Fannie Howen, to do, you know, facility study. I mean, it's comprehensive study, probably, I don't know, six-hundred pages or more out there, and those are one of the things we talked about strategically, placing schools the size of like Roberts or Chico in different areas of the city. It's critical right now, because this is a shortage of staff. So even on this building, we have our head custodian retired, and we've put it out for advertising, we had two people, you know, apply for it. I mean, and that's typical with the custodial, nurses, child nutrition, transportation drivers, and that, so this is just so large now, we can combine some of those facilities, you can get better coverage with, you know, with teaching staff, administrative staff, and everybody, so.
I just think it, for me, it helps me to have a visual for that.
Yeah.
And, but I think it could be, I think there'd be other people that might help too, to have that kind of a visual.
Yeah.
So, so in other words, the priority is to figure out where we can save money before we can spend money.
Well, we know what we can save.
We need to.
We just got to do it, so.
We just got to do it.
But I mean, if you would get a demographer, and it shows your population growth, just say where they're, it may be here centrally, just say, and you have, just say you only have one school here, and you have five schools on the east side, and the population is doing to, or no longer there, and the growth is not there, so you would need to be looking at, trying to locate some different facilities close to where your populations are, similar to what we're doing in West Little Rock, so.
So let me ask this question another way. What would you suggest we do?
Most, I mean, we got to have that discussion. I would say probably look at a demographer. We had, had one in the past, not for student enrollment and things like that as far as placement, so I know maybe do, that may be something we can look at, but.
The other thing, I can jump in, the other thing that you have to do, beyond looking at your facilities, just your own staffing of what you're doing, to staff schools. That's everything from operational side of schools to the instructional side. And, you know, we, we've made reductions, I think every year I've been here, we've made some form of reduction, but we're still at a place where we can continue to tighten, and you have to live with your enrollment losses each year and make those adjustments too, in a timely way. So, you know, we're gaining a little bit at the secondary level now, in terms of our population growth, but at the elementary, we're still losing. So I just, while I was, you all were talking, I was playing with some numbers. You know, when you look at the combination of, of Booker and Carver, we're two-hundred-and-thirty-eight students at Booker and a hundred-and-seventy-four at Carver, so that's, by my calculation, four-hundred-and-twelve, am I right on that?
Close enough, close enough.
Sorry?
Close enough.
Four-twelve, but then if you go look at.
Says the numbers guy, that's right.
Carver, in terms of where they're at right now, they, they're, they're down sixty-six kids from that four-twelve. So where did those sixty-six kids go? Okay? Did we lose them to East, East, East M? Did we lose them to some other place? Did they go to some other school? But our overall elementary numbers, they keep dropping. If, one final number, just stat-wise, if you look at our October count to where we're at right today, we're up, excuse me, we're down eight students. If, if school were to start tomorrow, or school all of a sudden jumped to October count, we'd be down eight students. So typically, we do gain some students over the summer, but, and we had the game last year, so I'm hopeful that we have some, we have a gain again, but we're still got elementary issues. Secondary, we're covering. Some cool stories on West High has gone up another, basically about seventy kids going into next year, and Hall's gone up about seventy kids. And, and those, remember, at one time, we were happy with fifty, okay? And, and so there are some growth, and we're, we pay more, Ms. Hatter always brings this point up, we're paying a lot more for those schools, but the commitment you all have made, we are seeing some growth in those schools. Parkview, it's up right now, sixty kids from where they were.
So just, just year we're going into, Mr. Por, is it year two of the three years that we committed to those schools?
That's correct. Next year will be year two.
But, but I look at Hall, Hall has competition all around it. I mean, we just got to do more pulling and digging students away from those, those other entities.
And that's kind of, I think, the magic of Amy Cooper, of what she's done, to be able to, you know, have the Forest Heights kids really say, we're going there. Last count I heard was over thirty-five kids from Forest Heights going to Hall next year. We haven't had that happen. I don't know how far back you'd have to go.
But, but Hall lost students when Southwest opened.
Correct.
Because it used to be the ESL Center.
That's correct.
And a lot of kids who started at Hall ended up at Southwest. And that, that, that situation didn't end well, as far as I can see, because of the mixture of different neighborhoods and whatever. But if we would go, if, if, would they have a choice, those kids at Southwest, to go to Hall? Or is that going to forever be a neighborhood school?
Hall is a magnet, so they do have a choice to go to Hall.
Okay, so it could be an ESL magnet?
I don't know about that, but it, that's something you all could talk about.
Because I know they, they have, at one point, they were focusing on the ESL situation, and they had teachers who were certified in ESL, and had books and whatever that were, were crossing each other. But then, with Southwest open in all three different areas, like Fair and McClellan, and then the ESL kids all together, it didn't work well.
Well, I guess that one thing I would, I'd challenge on Ms. Calloway is that, actually, I think it has worked well, and remember, those kids were having to be transported every day on a bus for thirty to forty-five minutes from the Southwest up into Hall, and now we've eliminated that bus traffic, because they're down in the Southwest, and they're in a school that does get the support from those ESL teachers that we had at Hall. It just changed the, changed the atmosphere at Hall with less students. But those kids now aren't getting bussed.
So they're actually attending the schools, because most of them was on for McClellan. So it was also an effort to help with parental involvement, because parents have to come all the way from Southwest, where a lot of them might have been working all the way up to Hall if they had anything going with their child, so that was probably, when it was implemented, probably an action to save Hall, instead of, you know, it being closed down when we start moving different populations over there to kind of fill up the school. And that's what's happened in Little Rock, in many cases, we just had too many sites, and we'll start moving a special population or some other population there.
Let's talk about Central.
Yeah.
Someone made the comment that people shouldn't have to send their kids twenty to thirty minutes across town to get to a good school. And I'm like, okay. So though they're passing right by Hall, and it's the way it's been redistrict, you know, if you look at Central, and Central to me is overcrowded, it's, it's a money pit, always was. Years ago, when what is now West Little Rock, it was a community called Pankey, and those kids were. And those kids were, uh, they were bussed from out there to Haras Man. Or to Dunbar, but nobody cared about that then. All I'm saying, you need to kinda look at that, you know, we're talking about busing, period. And I'm, other than when I was working with various clubs and everything, I, I, I didn't ride buses. And we walked the school, but anyway, that's another story. But, uh, they need, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, okay? So why is it that right now, there's a lot of kids who live out there in West, uh, Little Rock who are zoned for Central, okay? So they're still gonna ride that far out there to Central. But the people from Southwest can't ride to Hall.
I think that may be something that you all gotta look at, high school attendance zone too, when you add another, you're gonna have another full high school coming.
That, that, that's an excellent point. Uh, we're going to have to look at, at, at that. And, and, and the costs of busing and whatnot, because, um, even back in, when I was teaching at Central and that was in the Stone Age.
Can I bring up a point, Ms. Coway? I'm gonna interrupt you just a little bit because I wanna kinda keep our flow a little bit, but.
Okay.
One of the things, and I, I'm saying this a little bit on the behalf of Dr. Wright, uh, not that he's asked me to, but just that I want, I, I'm worried, I wanna keep him around, okay? I wanna keep all of you around. And here's, here's the deal. You have, I think what Kelsey's saying is, use this coming year to do some studies that are thorough and done right so that then you'll be able to use the natural growth things that are gonna start to happen the following year with the opening of the K eight, with the completion of the Central projects, the completion of the West projects, so that you can map out when and how you want to do things. If you do it right now, you are ready to have World War Three. If you think closing schools was rough, if you start to get into changing high school attendance boundaries right now, you will have a fight that's dramatic, okay? And, and it, it doesn't need to happen because it's gonna need to happen eventually as you deal with the, the development of Central's campus and the West campus. So I would just, uh, make sure there, there's a lot of caution right now. I, I, there's, Ms. Coway, you're right, there's a lot of people in the community that, that see all those things. But it, it's, right now, I would strongly urge you not to go there, figure out the kinds of study and the data and how you wanna do it, and then use that for the following year, uh, to move forward.
Well, uh, the, the projects that have been, uh, uh, changed and, uh, for buildings of Central, I, I feel, I feel sorry for the teachers, but, um, I don't, you know, like the extra wings came up. And, uh, that's going to add more students. And okay, let's say when they open West and those, that population out there that wasn't going to Central will start going to West, okay? So you're gonna have a building, uh, that is probably going to have fewer students than they have now. Uh, like, what does Central have, like twenty-five hundred students?
Roughly, uh, between twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yeah, well, a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, you couldn't even walk down the halls when I was working there. But, uh, then we'll have all that extra space that we're getting ready to spend on, uh, you know, these projects.
I don't think you have a, a whole lot of excess space. Hopefully, I mean, the hope, we can bring some of the students back as well. So we know we lose a lot of students in secondary, uh, some of the charts we've seen. We've done a pretty good job maintaining our base on middle schools. So that was a big focus for the district over the last ten years, retaining those middle schoolers. Uh, we still lose a lot of, still the middle school, but they come back in high school. So that's what we've kinda seen, that, that, uh, the growth, well, that's what we've seen the growth over the last five years on middle school and high school. So the K, I think transition has helped us quite a bit, keep those kids after that elementary from transitioning out to some, to some other form of education, back with homeschooling and it's taken some kids, students too in the pandemic. But I know we got several pieces on here, but it's good conversations, a lot of conversation. This is budget conversation we have. So I mean, all the things we talked about, all those narratives, we don't always talk about numbers, but it relates, it's gonna relate to some kind of resource allocation. So it may not be dollar for dollar, it may be human capital that we're looking at or whatever it might be. It's transportation or, or just, uh, whatever, you know, utility costs and things like that, so.
Uh, I hope, Mr. Bailey, that you might, you know, come back to us in, in this next year, you know, think about more about a demographic study.
I hope, yeah.
Because I think that that could be useful for us to do that now so that when we end up having to make some decisions about later, about schools and about rezone, you know, you know, attendance zones, things like that, it could be a more informed decision for us.
I think whether to get us information with the population growth and different things like that. They probably could survey, you know, staff like you, seeing how many families wanna choose the West Little Rock High School versus, you know, commuting across the area. If you have a, a student that's driving, they'll probably choose to commute a shorter distance, so. It's hard. I mean, we, we struggled this year on transportation, getting kids from West Little Rock over to Central just because of the construction and just the not long of time, you know, it just takes to get to that point, so.
You know, and I understand that, but I think that that's something that, that we really do need to consider.
We have our work cut out. I know Dr. Wright is ready.
You're not mad at me yet, are you?
All right, Jack, you wanna, are y'all ready to continue?
We're ready, we all are.
Okay, all right.
So on page ten, we're gonna now just kinda show you some of the categorical funding that the district receives. And the first item is the alternative learning environment. And if you look at line item, if you look at line item thirty-one, uh, the left-hand side, you'll see the, uh, what we call the ALE funding uh, is funded at four thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars per student. That's gonna increase to the, in the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year to four thousand eight ninety. But for Little Rock School District, that means, uh, six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars. And in each one of these categories, we've kinda listed what those funds can be used for, because these are categorical, they are restricted, uh, but they can be used for these items. Then we have what we call the English Language Learner. And if you look at line item thirty-two, uh, for fiscal year, the current fiscal year that we're in, it's three hundred and fifty-nine dollars per student. So for Little Rock School District, that's a little over a million thirteen thousand. That number is gonna increase in twenty-two, twenty-three to three hundred and sixty-six dollars per student. So you're looking at some increases. And again, we list, uh, in the paragraph below each heading, uh, how those funds are restricted and what they can be used for. And then on the Professional Development Funding, which you can see in line item thirty-seven on your state aid printout, uh, for Little Rock School District, it's seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars, uh, a little over seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, you can fund up to forty dollars and eighty cents per student, but the actual amount that's being paid at this point is thirty-six dollars. And again, on line item thirty-seven, you can see in the print sees thirty-six dollars per student, again, which represents seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, forty-five dollars. These categorical fundings that we're talking about are above and beyond the foundation funding that you get. It's just that they're restricted for certain, uh, items. On number eleven, and Leanne mentioned this earlier, the, what we used to call the NSLA funding, but it's now called Enhanced Student Achievement. And you can look at line item thirty-three, and it is your largest categorical funding. It's a little over sixteen million dollars. And it's all based upon, uh, what a percent of the students are in the free and reduced lunch program. And so if you are above ninety percent, you're funded for twenty-one, twenty-two at a thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars per student. If you're below ninety but above seventy, you're funded at a thousand sixty-three dollars per student. And then if you're below seventy, it's at five hundred and thirty-two dollars per student, again, for twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. And you can see at the end of each one of those sentences under A, B, and C, we list that for the ninety percent plus, that's gonna rise to one thousand six hundred and thirteen for twenty-two, twenty-three. B, it's gonna increase to a thousand seventy-six for twenty-two, twenty-three. And then for C, it's gonna increase to five hundred and thirty-eight thousand for twenty-two, twenty-three. And the, the category, when you look at the paragraph below that, that lists what those funds can be used for, it is, it is, in our mind, it's kind of your broadest category that gives you the most flexibility on, on what those funds can be used for. Any questions on page ten and eleven, or Kelsey, or Mr. Porter, anything you all wanna add to that?
I think that Mr. Bailey and I, uh, have worked with the legislature and with our Administrator Association. This is an area where their legislators are always trying to, they, they wanna try to constrict this in some way. But every time they do, they also get an outpoint from school board members and superintents to show how this money is actually making things work. Good example would be security, right, Mr. Bailey, I think, out of this area? And, um, it's, there's no other place where you can find a place to fund security.
Yeah. So there's no funding, uh, piece in the foundation funding for security personnel. So we spent about eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars on our SROs out of this funding. We have a lot of our paraprofessionals come out of here along with some of our early childhood programs and things like that. So some are after, before and after school programming, and some are summer programming prior to, uh, S R fund, so.
What does it mean, highly qualified classroom teachers?
Mayor, um, that's, uh, teachers who have, uh, the extra certification.
So this, this allows us to pay extra for people to get certifications or additional training?
It means like, for instance, if you're certi, if you're a certified, a nationally cert, a board certified teacher, they get like X number of dollars extra.
I guess that's what I was asking. So, so is this, what allows us to do that? No, so, and I, I know it's what Teacher A, Mr. Robinson left out, so like a highly qualified, uh, paraprofessional would typically have their sixty hours, college hours, plus whatever other credentials they qualify for this. So in order to pay for a teacher out of here, it has to be beyond what's required by, uh, state law. So you couldn't pay for a kindergarten teacher out of here if, for, if you just had twenty kindergarten students. But if you wanna do a class size reduction, where you went from a twenty to one ratio to a ten to one ratio, you could pay for that teacher, but things that are required by your typical, uh, your staffing standards, you can't pay for. But it's beyond that. So if you wanted an extra nurse or an extra counselor or extra teachers out there to reduce your class size, that's typically what it's paid for, it's supplemental. So if you're required to have a teacher for those kindergarten, the first grade or whatever it might be, you have to pay for that out of your, your regular operating funds, so. It has to be an additional, so it's, supplements whatever you, you're doing in your foundation, your operations.
So the, so the additional pay that Ms. Coway was referring to, like for being nationally certified?
That, no.
That can go to operations?
Operations is the state. So the state has a portion they fund. They send it to the districts now and we just payroll it, just run through payroll. But we also give three thousand dollars every year for National Board, so. So some teachers may get thirteen thousand, actually for being, uh, National Board certified. So it may be ten thousand from the state and three thousand from the district, so. But that ten thousand totally comes from the state, so.
Thank you.
On page twelve, we look at, uh, the, the student growth funding, which, uh, you can see on line item forty-five. If there were student growth funding for Little Rock, that's whatever would be listed. And it's, it's exactly what it, it says. It's that if you're growing kids, you'll benefit, you'll get extra revenue. The important part about student growth funding is not only you get that added revenue there, but since you're growing, your categorical funding numbers go up, so you also get additional revenue under the categorical funding. Whereas on the declining enrollment funding, again, it's for declining enrollment. And if you look at line item forty-three, you can see that Little Rock for twenty-one, twenty-two is gonna receive two million eight ninety-nine, one fifty-eight, which you're always very glad to have it, but it also means there could be some reductions in the other categorical funding. And so Leanne had mentioned that earlier, that growth in enrollment is at the end of the day, that's how the school funding formula, um, is, uh, is, is calculated. It also mentions isolated funding. Uh, Little Rock is not isolated, and so of course, you're not in that category. So if it's all right with you, we're just not even gonna talk about isolated funding, cause it just doesn't apply to Little Rock. And again, all these categorical fundings that we just pointed out are again, above and beyond your foundation funding. Now, we had mentioned earlier about the ninety-eight percent that you are guaranteed to receive on your first twenty-five mils. This is your, this is basically your calculation for that, where it talks about funding to ensure a district receives the full amount of foundation funding. They're basically gonna take, when I say they, the state will take your actual property tax revenues you received and multiply it by your twenty-five mils, divided by your total mils, to determine what your net revenues, to, to determine whether or not you're gonna either get additional funds to get you to ninety-eight percent or if you're at ninety-eight percent, that you have to basically rebate the state back on what you're above that ninety-eight percent. But we can't reiterate enough, it's only on that first twenty-five mils on the uniform rate of tax. And that's why we had mentioned that, that if, if, Leanne and I think that if we were sitting in the superintendent's chair, the CFO chair, if you're sending money back on that twenty-five mils, it means you're getting additional funds on everything above those twenty-five mils. Um, on page fourteen, this is, uh, what we call the Teacher Salary Equalization Fund, uh, that was Act six eighty into twenty-twenty-one session. And if you look at the state aid printout, you'll see that, uh, on line item forty-seven, you are at zero. And Mr. Bailey, you all already meet that category, as I understand, that of the, of the fifty-one thousand, eight twenty-two average teacher salary, where you all don't benefit in that, correct?
That, that's correct. I had, I've changed this up. I think we're about fifty-five, so we'll verify, but I don't think we're gonna get any more money on that. We did get money to get up to thirty-six thousand. We had thirty-three thousand some, I believe, at that time.
That's, that's the one ten deal, what is?
So right now, they're, they're trying to get the teacher salaries up even more. So before, we were below thirty-six thousand. So all districts, I think this is the fiscal year, maybe next fiscal year, everybody had to be at thirty-six thousand. We jumped ours up on the first year and used all our money the first year. So some districts did it over a three-year period because they couldn't sustain that, so. But this is gonna be even to get the average teacher salary. This is the average teacher salary. That was the beginning teacher salary, so.
Is, I mean, will we get this again, like next year, never again?
No, we, we hadn't, we won't get this portion, cause our average teacher salary is actually higher.
So I, I'll, I'll jump in a little bit. And the, we won't get this, but, the but is, the governor has proposed to, um, enhance the salaries. He's not getting a great deal of support from, uh, the rest of the state legislators. Uh, especially many of the conservative groups are more, uh, wanna be more cautious, would like to wait, study it more. But if that were to happen, we could benefit from it, because our starting salary is at forty-three thousand and he would like to get it to forty-six thousand. So, you know, from what I understand, our legislators are behind what the governor wants, but, you know, some of the others throughout the state are not. So it's, that's a hard thing to move forward on. I don't know whether it's gonna happen or not. Maybe it'll happen under the new governor.
We'd definitely take the money if they give it, though.
On, on page fif, page fifteen is just a snapshot of your state aid printout. We wanted to show you all that.
And for those who are watching, this is kinda what the, we've been going over the state aid numbers on here. I should've highlighted that earlier when we were referring to it, so.
Page sixteen is what we call the Academic Facilities Partnership Program. It was a program that was developed where the state can partner with school districts based on a formula to help, uh, participate, uh, with the building and equipping of facilities. Uh, for Little Rock School District, you all really don't benefit in this program based on the formula. But just looking at a snapshot, the way, uh, on the current, on the current read is that for, for Little Rock, Little Rock would basically be responsible for eighty-nine percent of the project cost and the state would, would come in at eleven percent. So it's really, not that it's not appreciated, but from the standpoint, it's, it really does help Little Rock. And I don't think you all have got anything at this point, do you?
We do, we have a few projects, yeah, roofing projects.
So roofing projects and things of that nature. But i- if, if you do get it, yes, so you would get about eleven percent paid for from the state. There are other districts that that spread is, is larger based on the funding formula. One of the things that they have added into this formula recently has been the, um, they've added the category of relative medium income into the formula, whereas beforehand, it was not part of the formula. And so based on the last read, y'all are about eighty-nine to eleven percent. What we wanna get into, if we can, and, uh, you all, Mr. Porter, Mr. Bailey, let us know when, for, on, on how our time is. We kinda wanna talk about the debt financing options, uh, for Arkansas school districts. And if you turn to page eighteen, and Leanne referred to this earlier about non-bonded debt and bonded debt, and you can see under this chart, over the last five years, uh, the total debt of Arkansas school districts, at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, the total debt was a little over almost five point four. over, almost $5.4 billion for non-bonded and bonded debt for Arkansas school districts, which includes building and equipping facilities, it includes buses, it includes computers, it includes technology. And so what we're going to do is, we're going to go into the non-bonded debt, and then we'll talk about the bonded debt. Non-bonded debt, which we talked about in your financial analysis, basically consists of four items: post-stated warrants, installment contracts, lease purchase agreements, and the state revolving loan fund. On of these four items, the state revolving loan fund is the only non-bonded debt that a district has to basically apply for and be approved by the State Board of Education. The other three, the post-stated warrants, installment contracts, and lease purchase agreements, are all loans that the district can take out and then notify the state that they have these loans. So these four categories, for post-stated warrants, and these are really an interesting non-bonded debt in Arkansas, and school districts are the only ones that can borrow money by issuing post-stated warrants. And a post-stated warrant is nothing more than a post-stated check. And so if a district was to go borrow, let's say borrow money for a bus, and wanted to repay that bus over a seven-year timeframe, and post-stated warrants was the mechanism that you chose, then what the district would do is, we would help you find a lender, all these from a competitive bid standpoint, so whoever bid the lowest interest rate, then you would basically produce seven post-stated checks, with each check being a principal and interest payment. Those checks are delivered to the lender, which is typically going to be a bank, and then once a year, on the anniversary date, that bank will pull out one of those checks and cash those checks. Now, folks in Mr. Bailey's position typically don't like these post-stated warrants, because you're taking checks, you're taking them out of sequence. Not only that, you've got to remember that if you change banks, you have to be sure and change your post-stated warrants. But they have been a popular item in the past. We don't see them as much as we used to. We see more of the next two items that we're going to talk about. But again, it is, it is a mechanism that school districts can use to borrow money secured by operating revenues.
So, Jack, a question about that.
Sure.
That sounds like a rural school district type thing. Is that more popular than rural, rural, rural school districts?
I would say so.
A smaller bank, you're exactly right, yeah.
Yeah, I would say so. I would say so. And I, we have had a situation where a bank, I mean, a school did change banks, and the lender went to cash that check, and it bounced. And of course, it wasn't a problem. They called the district, and they said, we forgot, we changed. They immediately got him another check and replaced the warrants. But it's just something else that you have to take care of. But I think that's a great way of looking at it. The installment contract is very, it's nothing more than an installment loan. So if you ever borrowed money for a car, you're going to schedule your repayment term, let's say, so when Mr. Mason and I were working together back at Union National Bank, we'd do a car loan, we would do it for four years, right? So they would get a payment book, there'd be 12 payments a year, and you would make your payment on a monthly basis. It was called an installment loan. And that's what an installment contract is, is that your loan can either be a monthly payment, it could be a quarterly payment, it could be a semi-annual payment, or it could be an annual payment, however it's negotiated with the lender. The lease purchase agreement is very similar to the installment loan, but it's more, well, the installment contract is, when you make your last payment, you own whatever it is you financed. On the lease purchase agreement, it's, you go through your repayment term, at the end of that repayment term, you can own what you financed. But what most school districts do, from a lease purchase standpoint, if they're leasing buses, and they do it for like five years or seven years, you put a lot of miles on those buses, so at the end of that lease term, most of the time, I think, districts turn whatever it is they leased back in and restart all over again. You primarily see a lot of that with technology, because look at what technology does. If you do a five-year loan for technology, look at how much it changes over that period of time. Or if you're doing it for copiers, think about the number of copies that you make on your copies, and, you know, at the end of the day, they're kind of worn out. And so when we put out a term sheet, we list post-stated warrant, installment contract, lease purchase agreement, and let the lender check which mechanism they would prefer. And Leanne, when you agree, it's typically lease purchase or installment contracts. At the end of the day, our goal is to get you the lowest interest rate that we can. The revolving loan fund, you're limited to a maximum amount at one time of $500,000, and it's the one line item of these four items that there's not a cost. The other three, there is a transactional cost, but again, from our standpoint, we look at it from what's going to get you the lowest interest rate, but you're limited at how much you can borrow on the revolving loan. And again, that's an application process, and that does involve state board approval. And you can kind of see that from '17 to '19, the total amount of non-bonded debts from one of these items that school districts have for the fiscal year '21, a little over $81.5 million in loans on non-bonded debts. And again, these loans are secured by your operating revenues of the district. Page 20 kind of highlights what we just talked about, so let's just kind of move into page 21 on the revolving loan. The revolving loan fund, it typically, up until recent times, has been the highest interest rate. The other mechanisms have typically had a lower interest rate, plus they have a larger borrowing amount. But we still have a lot of school districts, just because they're comfortable with that, to do the revolving loan. But again, they're used for your short-term items, buses, copiers, technology, equipment. You can use them for buying land, you can use them for building something, but you're limited to a 10-year maximum repayment term on a non-bonded debt unless it's energy conservation measures like HVAC systems or lighting, and if that's what you're financing, you can go out 20 years on energy conservation. And then, at the bottom of this page, we mentioned, in addition, districts have a short-term indebtedness option. That is an option where a district can go, and again, Mr. Mason, this is kind of what you alluded to, maybe a smaller rural district, that if there's a cash flow issue, you know, during the year, primarily say during the summer or whatnot, they can go to their local bank, they can borrow money for operating expenses, but the kicker is, that loan has to be paid back by the end of the calendar year of the fiscal year that we are in. So we are in the '21, '22 fiscal year right now, so if Little Rock School District were to go get a short-term indebtedness loan, it would have to be paid back by the end of December of this year. However, if you waited until July 2nd, it wouldn't have to be paid back for until the end of calendar year 2023.
Kelsey, can you give us an example, when you would exercise this right here?
Yeah, we would never probably do a revolving loan, because it's limited to 500,000, and 500,000 just doesn't go anywhere for Little Rock. So, I mean, on a payroll, if we had something, we'd be looking at, you know, five to six million dollars on a thing. So that was last year when we had maybe some cash flow difficulties due to, you know, just the way the timing and collections were coming in, so we worked with our treasurer to make sure, when they got money in, instead of waiting until the normal distribution, they would actually, you know, send a portion out, so we could make sure we had that cash flow. This past year, we really hadn't had any issues, but last year was pretty thin, so.
And all your own non-bonded debts are a combination of either lease purchase agreements or installment contracts.
Yeah, so lease purchase agreements we typically have is maybe for a large technology purchase, like maybe replacing all server redundancy and things like that, where we may finance it through Dell at a low interest rate, or when we did the energy conservation, we actually went out for bid, and I think US Bank won that one, so we spent that. And Jack listed it earlier, I think it was 13, I'd look and see how much it was, 13 million, close?
Yes.
Somewhere around that amount, so we do have a few of those. The biggest part is our bonded debt, which I think he's going to jump it to now.
So on your bonded debt, and a bond is nothing more than a loan, as you all know, because you've just been through this. A bonded debt is a loan that is secured by your debt service mills. Your debt service mills will be on the books for as long as your bonds are outstanding. And, and of course, for Little Rock School District, you have 12.4 debt service mills. If you look on page 23, they are typically used more for deconstructing and equipping for school facilities, making repairs to existing facilities, or purchasing land. They're really more for your big-ticket items. And you can see, at the end of fiscal year '21, the bonded debt that was outstanding was almost $5.3 billion for Arkansas school districts across the state. On page 24, we have what we call election options, and we have non-election. Election would be exactly what Little Rock just went through. In this particular case, it was an extension and a restructuring of an existing millage. But you have elections for new millage, restructuring a millage, or restructuring a new millage. What we did with Little Rock was a restructuring of millage. So if you ask yourself, or you're ever asked out there, when does something require a vote? Anytime there's a change, it requires a vote. And we're going to talk about the no-changes when we talk about second lien bonds and refunding bonds, and those are other options that districts have. Refunding is, as Leanne mentioned, on those issues that you had, refinancing existing bonds with high interest rates to lower interest rates to save money. And then the second lien bonds is exactly how Southwest High School was constructed by the issuance of second lien bonds, and we've got some examples of that we're going to show you momentarily. Yes, ma'am, did you have a question?
I'm going to take, take it for us.
We can do that.
Sure. The big Tim is?
That's fine. So two hours, we get an extra hour, or is it just two hours?
No, we ought to finish up with them, two hours.
Well, we can, I mean, we can.
What increment do they do, training?
Oh, we can redo the forms.
We'll update it.
Yeah, forever long we're in here, we'll update these forms and get them to Mr. Bailey, and we'll just get him re-signed. That's not a problem.
You want to get that credit?
Yeah.
We'll break for 10 minutes.
I want my certificate.
Let's come back at 7:45, how about? Take a little break for that.
Y'all need something to drink?
I'm good, yeah.
You know, this is something about a diet right here.
I don't know.[60.01]